Welcome everybody to tunnel meeting number one hundred fourteen. The ambassador program is September tenth, twenty twenty four. And today we will be in charge by Guillermo, Vanessa, Billy, Colly, Daniel, Macasa, O E P, Ridiya, Meeting Notes, very welcome, Sergio and William. Thanks all for being here. We'll get some more joints, um, yeah, during the call. Uh, as you can see on screen, a quick outline of the agenda, we start off with a couple of mentions and then, um, two bigger topics, uh, one being the budget, uh, consent process for, for Q four. And another one being an audit request across the whole program. This was, um, basically it appeared on, on Discord and I figured, well, let's have a temperature check on it. After that, um, I imagine there might be some time remaining on the slot. Uh, there's plenty of space for open topics. So please don't hesitate and suggest them. Yeah, if you're having. Then, uh, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. Uh, it's basically a group of people quite aligned with the singular internet ecosystem mission and vision and wanting to contribute to it, to help out. There's a wide range of self-organizing workgroups and yeah, if you're willing to help out, we do have a fitting workgroup where your efforts are most welcome. Do check out their Discord servers. Uh, there's a how to join section there and this will explain to you how to join. And with that out of the way, um, two mentions, uh, first of all, uh, tomorrow at fourteen UTC, there's a deep funding, open all hands meeting, the third of its kind. And I think it's not a, let me quickly double check. Um, there's not a two set agenda, but, um, it's, it's basically, um, all the circle members within deep funding will discuss, um, well, what's going on, all the deep funding operations. Um, so yeah, that's at fourteen UTC tomorrow. Then at thirteen UTC tomorrow, um, there's an interview training session, uh, by the AI ethics workgroup. And Vanessa, if you have any, well, any outline there on, on what will be happening?
Yeah, I mean, AI ethics workgroup is hoping to be starting some qualitative research interviews soon. So it's kind of mostly aimed at people who are in the workgroup and are doing that, but it's a really useful skill. And so we're, you know, it's open to anybody who fancies it. And it should be quite participatory and quite good fun. So we'd love to see people, if you're at all interested. I'm just going to put the Zoom link in the chat.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, it's also in the ambassador, um, general channel. Um, yeah, looking forward. Oh, right, uh, that does cover the mentions. There's the LinkedIn chat, nice. Uh, then, um, yeah, quick update on the, um, Q four budgets consent process. Um, all the proposals remain, so great stuff. That's, uh, it was quite a tight deadline, but, um, we can do that. So, uh, that's the good news. I have to say, looking at the numbers, there's also some, um, well, some challenges, I guess, is how you formally say that. Um, it looks like there's about forty percent, um, uh, budget fitting is, is needed. And that's, yeah, uh, we had this in the past quarter, so we're not, uh, inexperienced with the situation, but, uh, it's just, yeah, it's harsh, right? Basically, we want to, well, uh, award all the proposals, um. Yeah, in practice, we do have a, a limited budget, so we can't. Um, yeah, the, the way it looks right now, it's, uh, forty percent budget fitting. And early the, today during governance workgroup, um, we discussed, well, the situation and how to deal with that. And as part of that, um, there was mention of a document from, I believe, last week, uh, I, I was on holiday, so I'm not entirely sure if it was last week or the week before. Um, with a bit of an outline on, um, well, the potential measures we could take on, on, on cost cutting, because yeah, short term, it, it just looks like we need to have some cost cutting and, um, yeah, basically, I figured now would be a decent time to get some brainstorm on it. Um, ah, thanks for sharing, Vanessa, in chat, the, uh, consent form. Yeah, so basically the, the very first step, we made the deadline, that's, that's basically it. Um, I did want to pull it up just for a bit of an overview, because, um, as you can see, the next step is gonna be, um, Thursday, end of day. Um, yeah, that's the deadline for the uh, initial consent forms and, um, this is gonna be a relatively, um, basic consent one. And let's see, then, uh, Friday, um, we have the results of this step two. And then the workgroups which received no objections, uh, will be approved. And then, uh, for the workgroups that did not receive consent, um, we'll have a, a round of, of gathering feedback on the proposals, what needs to be changed in order to be, um, able to consent to it. And then the week after, um, I'm, I'm, don't worry, I'm not gonna go through the, the full thing, you can, uh, find it in the decisions to be made. Uh, then the week after, we'll, um, collect the forms for that and discuss it during governance workgroup on Tuesday. And I'll pass there, because, yeah, uh, the rest is, uh, still two weeks away. So yeah, great stuff on, uh, on getting that first deadline by all workgroups. Um, during governance, we did mention, uh, uh, a document from last week to be, uh, worked on asynchronously. So, yeah, I wanted to put it forward as a quick temperature check, like, should we be further discussing this right now or do most people feel like, well, do it, uh, async please, or outside of the town hall, please? Any thoughts?
One thing that we haven't really sort of discussed in any of the governance meetings and that I wonder is it's never really been like a criterion on which you could judge a budget. I mean, maybe some people have done it, but most people I don't think have ever objected because this budget is too high. I'm wondering, is this something that people are feeling that they might unconsent to a budget for this time? Because I'm just sort of thinking, you know, it feels consenting to a budget that is impossible to like honor feels a bit notional and a bit fictional. And of course, yeah, token price might go rocketing up again, in which case we won't have that, that problem, but it does feel a bit weird to be saying, do I or do I not consent to a budget that is impossible?
I agree. I had a question about that as well.
Feel free to, to add it. Or, or that was pretty much the same question or a different question.
Oh, the same question. I agree with her that I, I don't feel like, how can I approve something that I know is gonna be cut anyway?
Yeah, fair, um. No, it's a very valid question, absolutely. I don't have a direct answer, um. What happened last, uh, quarter was basically trusting that the workgroups are capable of managing their own, uh, forty percent budget cutting, which I think they did. Um, yeah, that doesn't change the situation, of course, um.
Although, to be fair, when we vote, when we consented last time, the big drop in price hadn't happened yet. There was a little bit of, you know, there was quite a, a lot of budget fitting that was needed, but there was even more after. So now it's a little bit different because we, we actually know that the budgets that we're looking at are impossible. And I just wonder, everybody knows that we need to kind of tighten our belts a little bit, and if people haven't very much. I suppose I'm just thinking, it doesn't seem very fair if some um, workgroups have really cut their budget to the bone and they're presenting something that's half what they presented in quarter three. And others are just, yeah, we're just putting in the same amount. The difficulty is that, that the system we've got incentivizes you putting in a high budget because you know there's gonna be budget cuts. And I just, I suppose what I'm trying to find out is, people who are here now, do you think that you will use how big a budget is as a criterion that you use to assess whether to consent to it or not? Because in the past, I don't think that has ever been raised as an issue.
In light of what I'm hearing, it makes a lot of sense that if someone is basically inflating budget, knowing that there's going to be cuts, um, can we recognize that? I think I would be on the lookout for that. I would, I would be looking at past budgets and so forth a little bit too, to, to be able to decide correctly.
Do we have any insights or are there any patterns, uh, or I guess best practice, things that we, that we learned from the last uh, cutting sessions in terms of what costs were cut most frequently?
And that's a very good question. Uh, I don't think we have a straight up document outlining the lessons learned there, to be honest. It's also different for each workgroup, right? There's, I don't know, work like four projects and, well, they got one of the projects done. Others are more, um, of an ongoing stream of work where they need to cut something, like you're not gonna cut three weeks of work, that you're, you're just scraping it everywhere. Um, but it's a very valid question, um. And unfortunately, uh, uh, as far as I'm aware, the answer would be no, we don't really have that.
How many budgets do we have in total? Guess it's.
As in the amount of workgroups or the amount of?
Well, if each workgroup has a one budget, then, then yes, how many budgets do we have? Or how many work?
Um, twenty-one workgroups put in a request.
Wow.
Yes, that is wow, absolutely.
So that's, and that's forty percent across the board. It's not like each individual workgroup needs to cut their budget by forty percent and it might have to be, you know. I guess the question is how to ascertain that? Do we need, do we have a mockup of even like, I think, I know, I think TiVo had a, um, spreadsheet that I used previously to track the, the individual budgets and also, yeah, okay, I have not looked at this yet. Do we have percentage breakout as well? So like, what, is, is that, um?
It is forty percent across the board, honestly, isn't it?
And if it is, then that kind of goes back to your question, uh, Vanny, like if someone puts in a ten thousand dollar budget and then slips five thousand dollars over, so how do we recognize that?
I've always been of the opinion that, um, budget cost should be according to the amount you, you are requesting for. Um, we can't be saying forty percent across when there's some who actually have two thousand dollars as their, uh, request. And then there are some that have under five K dollars as their request. And then they'll be having the same kind of, um, treatments or, or decisions with people that have over, uh, nine K and over seven thousand. I don't know, it doesn't seem fair to me. I've always felt that way.
I can understand, um. Yeah. Yeah, you, you, you're quite right. It's, it's the easy approach in a way. Uh, sorry, Guillermo, you have found the sense quite a while by now. Sorry, go for it.
You know, worry mate, sorry. Kind of loud. All, all fair point. Um, it's a tough one, yeah. Um, I, I was discussing previously and as we've mentioned on governance. Um, also it's tough to always be talking about money while we're talking about AGI as an so we, we need to learn to prioritize and, um, I do agree with Vanny, like the system we have. I don't know if incentivize workers to put a bigger number because there, there will be a fitted amount at the end. I don't know if that's the case for all workgroups and guilds, but the system works that way. Uh, uh, but definitely, uh, we probably, we, we, we all end up prioritizing ideas at the end of what we're gonna be using the, the allocation. Um, and we shouldn't be only looking the bold number at the end of the thing. We, we, all this consent process, or at least what we have been learning is about the ideas, we, uh, then how much we need for them, but it's all about the ideas. At least that was the process I intended to, while being a criteria, by proving or not or bringing concerns. Um, and then you can prioritize. And then you can apply an idea of what are we gonna eat, you know? Have this amount, okay, rice and beans or noodles or beef, but at the end it will become at the end is the amount. Previously have a need. So you will, you will find the balance between the, the ideas, the, um, and the budget we have, we, we, we can use in our, in our favor this consent process. Uh, probably having the discussion if it's, if it is fair to go through the whole process while knowing that we're gonna have end up beating the budget, cutting them. Well, probably this is a great experience for governance, because this is, uh, I was talking with Vanny previously, this is a good use of governance. Where are we prioritizing? Where are we putting our, our efforts? What we should do, what we shouldn't do, we need to team up or not, so. Still believe we should go for it, we should, we're gonna learn from it and then all the experience we get when this thing hits two hundred dollars market value, well, we're probably gonna have a better use of of this experience when we have a, a better situation. Uh, and again, I'm not gonna even say it because I don't wanna jinx it, but probably by the end of these next nine steps, who knows? Where we are with marketing, you know, so uh, let's, let's, I, I will go for playing the game of governance and, and I've been enjoying it. Uh, not the discussions, the, the, uh, uh, so I will go for it. Don't, don't be afraid of it. We'll get there eventually, or we will have something to clear, yeah.
Very true. Thanks a lot. Uh, Clement?
Yeah, um, hello everyone. Hi Peter. Uh, just wanna wrap my head around, uh, a few things. What if, um, some of these budgets um, that have been sent in are actually the trimmed budgets from each of the workgroups? What if what's been sent in here are budgets that reflects only core operational costs for some workgroups? Or a couple of workgroups here? And there's requirements to frame this down. How do workgroups get to, you know, scale through stuffs like that?
I don't think right now there's a set answer to that. It, it differs per workgroup, if I'm correct. But if anybody has the answer. It's, it's a good question, uh, in line with the, yeah, how to even deal with it. Um, William?
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, I interpreted Guillermo's comment about rice and beans correctly, but if, if, um, each uh, guild or workgroup has, if we were to map out the tasks and functionality of now that's included in each of the submissions and there was common adminis, required administrative rice and beans, so to speak. And we cannot clear those, um, out of the picture. I guess my question is, I know that the guilds can be individually responsible for cutting their budget, but is there a way for us to map those out and compare those from guild to guild to see what the, even, even to break out like the extraneous or the extra costs? So if we said that, uh, getting to my point here, if we said that each of the guilds needed two thousand dollars of rice and beans and the gamers guild has four thousand, ten dollars of extra costs and the R and D guild has sixty-six hundred dollars of extra cost, then we could probably apply it, um, a percentage and be a, a little more consistent without, um, maybe undercutting some of their rice and beans, so to speak. I don't know if we're looking at it that way, but that, that was one thought. Yeah, to your point, Vanny, I don't know what extra is, but if, if each guild has kind of standard, basic, fundamental tasks, but may, maybe they don't. I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with all the guilds to, to make that assessment.
Hmm, I would say, yeah, that there's a variety of workgroups and, and variety of setups, um, so it can't be done, um. Well, that's, that's the current setup at least, is that we allow for this freedom of diversity, which in itself is a great thing, I feel. Um, so that, yeah, I, I do think we can still for the Q three, uh, budget fittings retroactively ask people to include this in the, uh, in the report, just to have that information available, because right now we don't, um, we didn't, like, maybe some workgroups did put it in there. Um, I haven't read all the, um, reports yet, um. But yeah, collecting that information from all the workgroups, that, that would be very valuable, um, for sure. And then, uh, two other things I wanted to quickly touch on, um, first of all, Guillermo mentioned, um, money and, and budgets, just, um, that's not just, uh, like you mentioned, it's, it's just something for the past half year, right? Or maybe even a bit longer, um, quite a bit longer even, and it, it's always, it's always the top discussion, the, the budgets instead of the AGI and, yeah. Very open to, uh, having some sort of like long-term solution to the concept, um. Like when price goes up, well, the budgets can be, um, awarded what they request. But it's just, like, let's assume half the time, uh, token price goes down and we, we end up with the same budget fitting situation. Um, and then another thing you mentioned, uh, and also on, um, the concept of like all the workgroups, uh, getting the same treatment, um, the potential alternative to that, uh, would be to use, uh, groupings, right? We've got, uh, all these colored, uh, things indicating the uh, the amounts of the, just the USD value, um, of the proposal. In a way, we could make a system where the bigger ones get, uh, cut a bit more than the smaller ones. Just, yeah, we're like, we could have, I don't know, three levels or something with a different cutting percentage. Um, also noting that whatever system you put there, it will be gamed, like people will request a hundred dollars less to have less cutting percentage and therefore end up with blah, 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 but, um, that, that, there are some things we can do there. Um, I think, William, that's a legacy hand, I believe.
Yes, you're right. Yeah, I'll lower mine. Thank you.
Uh, Love, you're next.
Oh, I'm just, uh, I just wanted to point out that even with the crisis we had with funds, uh, this quarter, uh, a few workgroups have not actually reduced their budgets. You see, this is where I said that, um, budget fitting should be according to the amount you're demanding for. If your budget is high, then your fitting should definitely be as high as you are demanding. It's not actually fair. And then I've realized that, um, if there was funds, people actually get this high budget, like they'll, they'll get it. We would, we would not even be here talking about budget fitting. So maybe we should have some kind of cap. I don't know how that's going to work, but a cap for what a certain workgroup can demand, because we can't keep on doing like this. Just, uh, allow people to demand for any amount, no matter how, how outrageous it sounds, just get it and be moving. And then when there's fitting, uh, you, you fit it in a way that favors people that demanded for a high amount than those that, uh, demanded for a low amount. This forty percent is literally going to make some people turn to one grand when we are done. Or two. And that's like money for operational activities, like coming to meetings, documenting, that's it. Ah, I don't know. I feel like a cap would do something.
Yeah, we, the, the, this also came up, uh, previous quarter to potentially introduce, uh, a maximum amount, uh, for workgroups. So far it hasn't happened, but, yeah. Vanessa?
Yeah, I think, Love, you might be on to something there about a cap, but I think it would have to be, it couldn't be the same for all workgroups. I mean, it's inevitable that some workgroups are cheaper than others, like governance is always gonna be quite a cheap group because it basically just runs meetings and does, you know, creates a bit of content. That's kind of what it does. But I don't know, I don't know about this idea of bigger workgroups getting cut more or having a higher lowering percentage. I mean, they're bigger because they're doing more expensive work and they may need more budget in order to be able to do something meaningful. So it doesn't really make sense to me that, oh, because you have a bigger budget, you get cut by fifty percent. It, and you know, a smaller one just gets cut by ten percent. That wouldn't really work for me. Um, I think there's a reason why some workgroups have a higher budget, because they do different things that happen to be more expensive. So I'm wondering if maybe we need tiers. And obviously a workgroup can move between tiers, um, from one quarter to the next, but maybe we need to say, look, there are some that are in the region of this amount, there are some that are in the middle and some that are never gonna go above a couple of grand.
Hmm. Actually, that, that kind of makes sense, yeah. If there's something called tiers, that would actually try and cover it. I mean, you could say at this tier, you can't get more than this amount. And it's, you would actually be able to calculate the percentage of fitting to if there is any fitting needed.
Oh. I mean, of course, it's gonna be a right one to decide which workgroup is in which tier, but yeah, that's, that's an interesting question. I mean, we, we, we could just look at what their budget requests have been over the last three quarters or something, but I think there'll still be arguments.
Yeah, we could actually discuss that. I mean, that's if everybody likes the suggestion, at least.
Well, you could do it, um, in a closed way, that at the moment of submission, uh, unlike the, the proposal submission, you, you don't know, uh, the thresholds for cutting, right? So it would be a bit of a percentage based, I guess. Otherwise, I do think people will game it, um. That, that being said, every system can be gamed, so, yeah, maybe it's naive to think, uh, to be able to prevent that. Right, um. Quickly checking chats, um. Yeah, these tiers would be hard to decide on, sure. No, I think we can manage, uh, we will be able to. Um. All right, um, just as well as I don't want, uh, the budget, uh, discussion to completely dominate everything we do in the program, but that also goes for, um, um, yeah, for the town hall, for the current session. So, uh, I do want to quickly check in the room if there's any further comments right now. Um. And that being said, like, um, earlier today, there was, uh, talk of documents with a collection of a, a couple of suggestions for cost cutting. Keep saying cost cutting, cost cutting. Um. Yeah, if, uh, anybody would be able to find that document and share it, uh, then we can, uh.
I think that's a misconception. We didn't say there was a document. We were saying that we were gonna produce one. There's been discussions. And in some of the governance meetings, there was suggestions made, so I was gonna pull it out of a couple of meeting summaries and throw it together. I'll do it by tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks, Vanny.
Thanks a lot. And then, yeah, an open request to everybody with any ideas on the topic, uh, to, to add to that document, um. All right, I think that was the topic for now. Topic, basically, we've got, uh, twenty more minutes. Um, yeah, with something I stumbled upon on the ambassador general, uh, chat from, uh, last evening, and I figured it would be a good thing to have a bit of a temperature check on the concept, um. Not to completely put, um, water on the spot here, but at the same time, I do feel the, uh, topic is big enough to at least have a little bit of a spot on it and urge people to, uh, read it and, and chime in on the, on the conversation. Um, that being said, water is not in the goal, I don't think. Um, so I, it's a bit weird to, um, I, I feel I shouldn't be the one introducing the concept, but basically he's flagging, uh, worries around, um, global representation and bit of an old guard hierarchy, as in, um, people that have been around for a long time um, have made certain power structures over time. And, um, he connected this, um, what, and also that, that power structure then being, uh, hard to, uh, to breach, to, to enter, to join. And he connected this to, um, a lack of global diversity in there. And yeah, I figured it would be a good thing to, um, at least call it out, uh, during tunnel and, and see if there's well, people with thoughts on the concept. And I do see a hand up, Billy. well, people with thoughts on the concept. And I do see a hand up. Billy.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um. The idea of an audit, I floated that a few months back. And, uh, it has never been done in this environment. But, uh, I, I believe an audit is appropriate. Uh, it will, it will find uh, ways to help the entire ecosystem function more effectively. And with just about any, anything that you're doing in any sort of a business or work environment, you're conducting regular audits to make sure that everything is functioning the way that it was meant to function. So that's what I have to say about the audit aspect of it. Um. Waka also mentioned a charter, which I had raised before in this meeting about this charter. And I asked him to provide a link to this charter, a link. And I didn't get the link. So if Peter, if there's a link to a charter that governs this group, then I would definitely like to see that. It should be a one-off document, because if it's a charter, it sets the, uh, proper procedures for how the ecosystem operates. And, uh, I, I would definitely like to be able to see that.
If it was there, it would not be hidden, um, that's for sure. Um, I think his, uh, referring to charter, uh, simply refers to, um, spreading the word about the mission efficient of SingularityNet. I think that's what he generally refers to. I, I can't speak on his behalf, um, but I think that's what he intends there, um, that being said.
I'm sorry about that. Uh, so we're talking about, what he's talking about is actually a mission statement?
Uh, close enough, yes, um, it's
Okay.
The way I understand it, literally the line of like, um, spreading the word about SingularityNet.
Okay, so it's more of a mission statement. Okay, so I had introduced the idea a few weeks back about uh, research and development and Guillermo maybe working with the community and creating either a charter or a constitution for the, uh, community. And I had said something, Guillermo said something that, uh, they could look into. Uh, I realize that this might actually be an additional cost on the entire community because of the research that would be involved with it. And coming up with a document that could be given to everybody's or everybody have access to. So I was just wondering if we continue to promote the idea of either coming up with a, a charter with the way we do things and, or a constitution, because even the idea that you, that was brought up here in regards to tiers, which isn't a terrible idea. Uh, tier one, tier two, tier three, people that have a budget consistently of three grand, people that might have a budget consistently of eight grand, people that might have a budget of fourteen. So, yeah, I could see the idea of tiers, but that you'd want to have regulated again within a charter or in a constitution. So that any changes that are being made to any of these things are made with the consent of the entire community, so that everybody is aware. I understand that it's the core contributors that are the decision makers in the processes of, uh, governing the community. And I did ask at the time if there was a set number, a quorum of core contributors in order to make a ruling on something. At one time, uh, Benny had said that it was eighty percent. Now, generally you can conduct a meeting with less than eighty percent as a quorum. So I was wondering if that's been looked into at all either. So those are the, those are the things that I sort of wanted to address. And in regards to the audit thing, I, I still think, I still believe it's a good idea. Thank you very, very much.
And you. Um, David, you have a hand up?
Well, I guess it's got covered on, on, on one sense on the, the chapter stuff, but the way I hear about it, my, like, thoughts go directly to the budget sheet you just showed in, in a few minutes before I joined. And to me, I kind of see that also a charter, like it's opens up the interests of the people who are here and the intent, intent they plan to do. And if you, if, if you have some proposals, you can, can have admission also there, what, what value they bring. And it's, uh, proposals are written, not all on maybe budget sheets. So, yeah, I just came from a constitution workshop, like, I feel like it's a lot of bureaucracy, um, and, but it was, was quite interesting, I like actually. It was fun, but, uh, point is, um, we perhaps put like collaboratively, do, um, a, a charter by just writing proposals and everybody has what same question. What is your mission towards SingularityNet? And maybe adding, how does it connect with all the other workgroups? So having in mind that you, you realize that all of the other workgroups and goals that are, they have something also they're pursuing. And, and you have read it. And now you're thinking how you are connected with what they're doing and how you're aligning to the single letter. And that's basically if you then go through all the proposals or maybe we just can kind of collect how everybody answered the same question, maybe we get something that is like a nice thing.
Yeah, fair. Um, I, I, I do feel we have, well, I wouldn't call it the constitution because it's not, but, um, I, I also put it in chat, we have a, a whole list of, um, process that, processes that are set and documented. It's just, uh, we don't have them, all of them in, in, in one place. Um. Yeah. I think that, that would kind of serve the same purpose as a constitution would, like, you just, the rules that are of engagement, let's say. And then connected to that, we do have the, the exact name escapes me, um. These two documents, uh, one of conflict resolution and one of, um, modes of engagement, but it's called different, apologies. Ah, I suck at letting go of not knowing what that document is called. Um, should be in this. Okay, I'm not gonna look it up, sorry, um. Yeah, interesting question. Do we need a charter? Um. The, um, arguing that there needs to be space for a range of visions, and, yeah. In itself, uh, I, I do think it, it would be problematic if some of the, um, things we set up and do would go against the mission of SingularityNet. But, but in itself, um. Yeah, that, that would be problematic to me, um. So, yeah, limiting the range of visions that can be here. I mean, if you're completely, uh, decelerationist and, and against AI progressing, uh, not sure if we should have that, uh, broad range of, um, visions. Yeah, fair, but I tend to agree with us, uh, if, um, uh, sorry to have this, this, um, more chat based than, uh, video based. Um. You're right, if, if you collect all the, the procedures and, and process we have and, and call it the constitution, then it's set in stone, I'm sure. Right now, the process we have in place are really flexible, as in if we figure out something doesn't work, we change it, uh, and we experiment. And that, that is a big, uh, big plus in my book. Um, then again, uh, just to step back on the, the post on, um, Ambassador General that triggered this, uh, even putting this on the agenda. Um. Billy, if I'm correct, you're, um, I, I, I am aware you, you asked for this earlier. Um, but I don't think from your side I've heard the, uh, global representation, um, like the geographical, um, side of things, and that was something that was, well, pretty prominent in, in Walter's, um, post. And again, apologies for calling it out here, but, um, without him present. Um, but so far I don't get the idea that it's, uh, that, well, I get the impression your, your audits, um, would be more general functioning rather than, um, well, with a focus on, on, uh, geographical locations. Would I be correct? I see your hands.
Yeah, my, my, uh, my, the purpose of the audit will be generally just the systems check. More than anything else, it could be, uh, a, a numbers check as well with the, uh, the budgets and things like that, but the, uh, the purpose of the audit is more or less the purposes of a systems check. The, uh, other aspect that I was speaking about in regards to a constitution um, or a charter. So that would actually incorporate, but SingularityNet wants to promote, how it wants to promote it. And make sure that that the goals and objectives from the SingularityNet organization are followed through here within this community. So I, I don't think it's there to be set in stone. Nothing is ever set in stone. If it's done with a pen and paper, it can be erased and it can be adjusted and it can be created new. But having something as a basis, as a foundation sort of makes sense. If it's just a vision statement that's going to determine how things operate within the community, then, yeah, you guys are free to do what you want. I'm, I'm, I'm here as a spectator and just trying to, uh, provide some idea of what I've seen, so. Thank you very much.
And thank you. I do see some, uh, comments in chat, uh, for example, uh, you cannot have an organization audited, uh, in quotation marks by people who are part of that organization. Um, yeah, which in itself, I, I do agree with, um. Then again, um, something like a systems check already feels a bit more open to that compared to an audit. Audit in my mind really feels super formal instead of more of a check. But, yeah, maybe that's just my interpretation. Um. Also, I, I didn't put this on the agenda to just now decide like, okay, we're gonna do, uh, audit in, in this shape or form, but I, I did wanna call it out and would urge, um, people in the room here or listeners, um, get to chime in on, on, on the conversation. It's, it's not the most fun conversation in my book, but it, I do think it's an important one, because there's, um, I wouldn't say allegations, but it, it's getting close to allegations in a way, um, insinuations of, of unbreakable old, the power structures. That, and centralization as well, um, which don't sit well with me, so I, I, best case scenario, we discuss these things in a way.
Okay, uh, so I don't know, I saw a, a comment in the comments section about us auditing us and we brought people in from the outside before to help with this community at the direction of the SingularityNet Foundation. And I'm wondering why it wouldn't be possible for that to happen again. So that there is no personal conflict at all uh, involved in this, that this is done in a structured and professional manner. And, uh, the results would just be laid bare. That's the easiest and, uh, most unintrusive way of doing it, I believe.
Yeah, so that's, that's in line with the comment of not auditing yourself, right? They're bringing in other people. I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you refer to with, uh, we did this before, to be completely frank. Um. Yeah. But I do think that's in line with, uh, don't audit yourself.
Yeah, no, it hasn't been done before, Peter. I agree with you. It, it, the whole, I, I have brought this up in the past is what I had meant, but the audit, uh, after speaking with you, I know that there has never been an audit done of this ecosystem and its functionality, so. And when Walker, Walter raised the point, I sort of, uh, tagged on him. It said, yeah, I, I think it's time that this, uh, ecosystem did have an audit from the outside, not from the inside. Because I definitely don't wanna see personal conflict being a part of the problem.
No, fair, I didn't mean, uh, we hadn't audited before, but you, I think you, maybe I misunderstood, but I think you said we had this before, like, uh, having external people step in and help us out. That, I wasn't sure. But maybe it's
Sorry, yeah, sorry, yeah, though that was the, uh, the group that came in and to help write up that other document that that's sitting on a shelf somewhere.
You mean the supervisory council?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, fair, um. Yeah, well, what to say? I mean, uh, part of that is, uh, there's, there's no full alignment on mission efficient there, uh, that, that in hindsight was something. Yeah, that didn't quite help. Uh, I, in my mind, we never really got it super clear, um, what we were doing, but yeah.
But we have a huge document that we helped to do and there is a lot of information about ambassador program. And that could be also maybe reviewed, like what, although to me, I feel like it's too early and right now this case you received, you showed, that's, that's the real focus, I think, right now. But, going back to like the decentralization framework, I think would be interesting to see what, what could we use it for.
Yeah, absolutely. They suggested a whole bunch of experiments, uh, very open to, to try some of them, that's for sure. Uh, Guillermo, go for it.
Yeah, sorry, just to make a last comment, I have to jump off. Um, I do recall on the first tunnel, we have, uh, you were camping in the woods. Uh, Billy bringing this charter, um, I have to say, I have to Google it. Uh, then I start learning about the Discord charter, also. Wasn't quite of a institution or this idea of audits on the, ready on the table, but, um, I do think probably it's a good thing that we keep digging in what this kind of tool can bring, you know? Use Discord, I don't know, open source, how, how party will be, will be good to have more of the developer department here, because it's hard to work with this for some time. But, uh, so, uh, yeah, I promise I could come back from that, Billy. Uh, then audit, uh, yeah, internal audit never works, perhaps. I'm from Latin America, I can tell you. The government just, uh, checking themselves, uh. Uh, I do believe that the best audit we can do is present results. And, and it's hard, uh, also to try different things. We are doing that internally in the R and D and, uh, brought some opposition, uh, uh, at the end. Uh, showcasing, uh, being accountable for the community, bringing results, deliverables, finding a system to follow process. Uh, if you have that, you don't need an audit, it's an audit, so. Um, so we should probably focus on bringing a transparency on the system and I, after reading some, probably this charter thing is a good idea, um. I don't know, I, I'm gonna take a little bit more of it. Billy, I, I, I'll give you that, uh. Probably you can, you can, you can have a call on that regard, but, um. Uh, yeah, um, no, that's all on my side, um. So good to have your back, Billy. I have to jump up on being
Just, I just wanted to say thank you very much Guillermo for, for continuing to look into that. I thank you very much for continuing to look into that and, uh, yeah, anything I can do, please let me know. Take care of yourself and have a great day.
Same.
Good stuff. Thanks for joining in. Um, I do see the clock actually popped over the hour already, um. Let's see, um. Teflon mentions an internal audit we do. Um. I don't mind. Yeah, let's click it and it will go to the share screen. That's fine. This is uh May twenty twenty four. Yeah, fair. That's, um.
Yeah, I could have did in the quarter to report. Oh, wait, it was not.
No, we could hear you. Well, you can hear us now anymore, maybe. I do think, well, th- this is, um, an, an internal analysis, which is clearly gonna yield different results than an external one. Um. I do think we should continue doing internal as well. Um. Yeah, looking at the calendar, though, bi-yearly would make sense, or like, like every six months. Uh, then we're quite uh in line for the coming one. Um, connected to an external audit is also budget. Uh, Walter also mentioned in his post, like he would be very happy to, uh, to lead such an, uh, or, yeah. Yeah, le- take initiative there and, and, and do it. That doesn't uh fit the auditing ourselves part. Uh, but he also mentioned he wouldn't do it without a substantial guaranteed budget. Um, or that's not his wording, but, um, yeah. Uh, a non-insignificant budget, something like this. Um. Which we don't have right now, uh, or at least in the Q four budget, uh, request. Um, it's not there. So that's, yeah, it shouldn't be an excuse for not doing it. Um. At the same time, it's not gonna be for free if we're gonna ask external people to drop in. Right, um, yeah, it's a topic, uh, that's not gonna be solved in, in, in one discussion. Uh, I, I do think it's good to discuss there. Um, I'm also quite happy I didn't hear much people uh strongly agreeing with the issues on either old guide hierarchy or global representation. Um. Very open to that. If, if people experience that, please do uh speak up, because these are, yeah, we, we have the aim of having a, a proper global representation. And old guard, uh, or, you know, guidekeeping by, by old members. Um, I think in a way, it's kind of like you can't really prevent it because it's just experience that sticks around. Um, but I would say, and I imagine most people agreeing with, that we're quite open to um new people stepping up and contribu- contributing. So yeah, if you, if you experience issues on these topics, don't hesitate to speak up because then we can figure it out. Alright, um. I do want to give a quick check for, um, for the questions, um. Other topics we should shortly, quickly, uh, touch on during this tunnel before wrapping up. So if you have any, please do speak up. Silence. Alright, then I think we can uh safely wrap up for today. Thank you all for, for being here. It's, it's good to be back from my side. Um, plenty of stuff uh evolving and happening. Um, yeah, thanks for, for sharing your time and thoughts with us. And hope to see you on, uh, one of tomorrow's and, and this week's many events. It's, uh, it's busy times, which is great. Um, yeah, if not, we'll talk on Discord. And I hope to see you on the next one. Thanks, all.
Awesome. Thanks, Peter. Take care. Take care, everyone.